All right, we're gonna, can y'all hear me? We are calling the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. All trustees are here. At this time, at this time, the Grapevine Colliville Independent School District, Board of Trustees, and Central Administration will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the continued success of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you. Before we continue this eve- this evening, I would like to remind everyone in attendance that this is a time and place for deliberation through which the Board of Trustees conducts the business of the school district. As the Presiding Officer, I expect all those in attendance to behave with decorum, giving all those present, including trustees, district administrators, and members of the public their attention and respect. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, the Board has designated a time today during today's meeting in which individuals have the opportunity to address the Board. At no time during tonight's meeting will members of the audience be allowed to approach the dais. If any materials need to be distributed to the Board, please see Board Secretary Kim Hodo. She's located right over here. Comments from those in attendance are not permitted outside of the specified public comment period as they disrupt the ability of the Board to conduct the business of the district. If at least after one warning from the Presiding Officer, any individual continues to disrupt the meeting by his or her words or actions, the Presiding Officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the individual removed from the meeting. The Board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience. Now we will have the U.S. and Texas pledges, and tonight we're honored to have our first Tech Challenge UIL Robotics Bronze Medal winning team from Grapevine High School join us to lead the pledges. They will proudly represent our organizations by leading the U.S. pledge, followed by the Texas pledge, and after the pledges, we will ask these students to please remain standing at their front for our first recognition tonight. And now join us for the Texas pledge. Ready, begin.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you to our robotics team. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Brad Schnouts for our recognitions.
All right, thank you President Ford. For our first recognition tonight, I'd like to invite Trustee Coley Kaner to present awards to these outstanding students. And this is for our first Tech Challenge UIL Robotics Bronze Medal winning team. The Grapevine High School Competitive Robotics Team won the bronze medal at the first Tech Challenge UIL State Championship held March 24th. During the event, teams compete in pairs or alliances to perform certain tasks to score points. Mustang Robotics finished as the third-place alliance captain in the overall top-ranked 5A high school in North Texas, an outstanding accomplishment given that the team only has one year of experience. During the regular season, Mustang Robotics received multiple awards, including the Inspire Award, which ultimately advanced them to the state championship. This prestigious award is presented to the team that best embodies a combination of all other honors, including robot design, innovation, programming, and community outreach, as well as documentation of the team's journey through the season in the form of an engineering portfolio. Congratulations to the members of the GHS Robotics Team. First up, we have Sean Mehann. Next up, we have Peush Mullik. Next is Olivia Nevin. Lot of love for Olivia there. Next up, we have Ajay Padmasolala. Next up, Dylan Pashan. Next, we have Nanthani Senthilkumar. Next, we have Allison Tran. And we have Kayla Tran. Next, we have Richard Zimmerman. And this team is led by James McCarthy, our CTE Robotics Instructor and Teams Advisor. Let's give it up to our bronze medal-winning robotics team. Hey, James, would you like to say a few remarks about this team and just kind of the journey that you guys took?
Yeah, actually, they, uh, they put in the work. They spent, I think, 180 hours outside of school between practices and events. The season's pretty grueling. Starts in September, and depending how far you go, it doesn't end until the end of March. So this, in addition to all the other things they had outside of school, big claps for Liv for, you know, she's on the soccer team. And a lot of these other kids, they do all kinds of stuff, so it's really tou- tough for them to get the time in there. They did a great job. We had a lot of support. Rick Bracy, Candace McGowan, Jesse Locke drove them up there, and my wonderful wife, she's actually the assistant coach but couldn't be here. And a lot of support from that guy right there, Mr. He is the definition of a leader, so he's a great guy, and I'll be sticking around as long as he does.
All right, Alex, we heard that. Thank you, James, and let's give it up one more, oh, I'm sorry, a good picture, okay. All right, James, you want to get in here? All right, thank you, guys. If I could have trustee Tammy Nakamura, if you will please make your way down to present our next award. And for this award, we had 11 GCISD students compete at the Texas Science and Engineering Fair, known as TXSEF, from March 24th through 26th at Texas A&amp;M University. The top 1,200 projects from regional competitions across Texas earned the opportunity to compete at state in 21 event categories in the fields of life and physical sciences. Congratulations to the GCISD state award winners, all from Colliville Heritage High School. First up, we have Patrick Bullock, third place in energy and sustainable materials. Next up, we have Abby Ha, third place in material science. Next up, we have Arshvi Patel, second place in chemistry. Next, we have Yuxitha Yarlelagata, second place in animal sciences. Then we have Benjamin Ding, who could not be here this evening, but he was third place In addition to event winners, TXSEF special awards are also presented by organizations, and Alisa Tharani won the Texas State of Health Physics Society Award, so let's give it up for Alisa. Arshvi and Alisa will now compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair, the ISF, May 14th through 19th in Dallas. Last year's international fair drew 1,800 projects from 75 countries. These impressive students are under the direction of Sonia Lockren, CHHS AP Chemistry or Advanced Chemistry Research Teacher and Science Competition Advisor, so let's give it up for Ms. All right, next, I would like to add Board Secretary Kathy Spradley and Board Vice President Shannon Braun, and I'll recognize another exceptional group of students, and that would be our UIL Class 5A Girls Soccer State Champions. Congratulations to the UIL Class 5A State Champion Grapevine High School Girls Soccer Team. The team has made six appearances in the state tournament over the last nine seasons, and the reason why they missed that, that, the three, one of the three, was because of the pandemic, and so we would have been there, seven of nine. But this year, came away with the gold over Frisco High School 1-0. Baylor University signee and Grapevine High School senior Teresa McCullough scored the lone goal on a penalty kick awarded by Frisco Handball in the Box. In addition to the state, yes, there you go. All it takes is one, ladies, and we did it. In addition to the state championship win, individuals on the history-making team received numerous accolades, including the conference 5A Girls Most Valuable Player, Teresa McCullough And members of the conference 5A Girls All Tournament Team, Cecilia Saron, goalkeeper, Samantha Lumpkin, defender, Teresa McCullough, forward, and Rowan Truman, midfielder. So please help me welcome each of our state champion Lady Mustangs. We have first, Sienna Alexander. Next up is Lucy DeLasso. Next, we have Laney Drysdale. Next up, Savannah Gormley. Next up, we have Jaden Gagowski. Next, we have Emma Hampton. Going back to Cecilia Saron. Cecilia, I apologize, that was a very polite way of saying, "You screwed up, Dr. Schnouts." Thank you, Nicole. I think we're back on track now. Again, apologies, Cecilia. I think we're back. Emma Johnson? Next up, we have Haley Jones. Next, we have Bella Lastinger. Next, we have Alexis Lawler. Next is Jenna Leverett. Next up, Samantha Lumpkin. The multi-talented student athlete, Olivia Nevin. Next up is Madison Patton. Next up is Sarah Pearson. Next, we have Miley Rollins. Next up is Presley Rhodes. Next, we have Rowan Truman. Wrapping up the team roster is Addison Williams. Our assistant coaches, Miriam Morales, Erin Quasah, Andrew Martinez, Kelly Barnett, and DJ Hammons, who could not be here tonight. Our athletic trainers, Tiffany Hoffman, Taya Campine, and Josh Jackson, who could also not be here tonight. We're just kidding. Slow down. Okay, so I want to go, come back to the trainers. Tiffany Hoffman, and then we have Taya Campine. And then I mentioned Josh Jackson, who could not be here tonight. And we have Brooklyn DeShow. And we cannot forget the leader of this amazing program, head coach Steve McBride. Coach McBride, we, we would love for you to say a few words about the journey of these state champions here.
Oh, man. Well, let's see, it started back, uh, in COVID. 2020, COVID freshman class comes in, this amazing group of seniors, 20-0 and 3, undefeated, were number one in the nation. To get shut down was unbelievable. Turned back around, kind of semi-normal, 2021, go to state, have to play at Mary Jane down at Denton, didn't get to go to Austin that year, lost to a really good Wauklin team. Turned back around last year, get to Austin, play Wauklin again. Unfortunately, we didn't get the job done, but pulled a silver medal. And this year, we start the year off against Wauklin, lost again, and threw two more times that weekend, and had a chance to talk to the press last night, WFFA, and I think that that weekend kind of put everything in perspective. We knew that we were going to get healthy, we knew we were gonna, we were gonna grow. We did not know what it was going to look like at the end. It was never our mission, but it became a destination. But I can tell you this much, when these girls get into playoffs, they know how to win, and now they can say they know how to win the big one. Just to put things in perspective, six state tournaments in nine years, now we get the top honor of being a champion. I think you put this class and obviously this school up against anybody in the metroplex, and you're not going to find a more consistent powerhouse over the last decade. They've also won 16 straight district championships, and they've done it under the microscope of DFW with everybody who is around us. We're finally now able to say we have a state championship, and not just our board people. I'm not talking about just CHHS, I'm talking South Lake Keller, Capel, it's, we finally got it. So I couldn't be more proud of them, the resiliency, the toughness of this group. It's, it's unmeasured. I mean, we knew when we stepped out on the field, give us a chance, give these girls a chance to finish the journey, and they were going to finish it this way. So very, very happy for them. I just want to take a very small moment to thank Doug Fingers for his unbelievable support, Mr. Raymond for coming down and, and, and obviously showing his support from an athletic standpoint, and obviously all the amazing parents who have been traveling with us all over the place. So what a, what an amazing journey for these seniors to finally get to the point where they walk out of here as the most prestigious program four years in the history of the school, so. And thank you guys from a board standpoint. Told you we were going to get back there so that you could put medals. This year, you got to put the gold medal around us, sir, so thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let's give it up for the Grapevine High School Lady Mustangs.
Can't forget my amazing staff, too.
McCullough, did you know you were going to that spot? You did, oh, sorry. Do you? I don't know, but if I don't, I give it back. Thank you. Congratulations. Uh-huh. Yeah, it's, it's good, you're good. Okay, yeah. All right.
Find the window, make sure I can see your eyeballs. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, you're good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate it. And there's a lot more to come.
All right. We want to give Mr. Berger an audience now. So for our last award this evening, I'd like to invite trustee Jorge Rodriguez to the front. Next up, we have our 2023 EdTech Trendsetter Award recipient and Impact 30 Award recipient. Kyle Berger, GCISD's Chief Technology Officer, was recently awarded two national distinctions as a leader in technology. These honors came on the heels of GCISD being awarded a first-ever New Line Interactive District Technology Award. EdDigest, a leading online source of tools, interviews, and trends showcasing the future of learning, named Kyle a 2023 EdTech Trendsetter Award recipient, specifically in the school leaders setting a trend category. The annual Trendsetter Awards recognize, acknowledge, and celebrate the most exceptional innovators, leaders, and trendsetters in the K-12, higher education, and workforce sectors. Kyle was also one of 16 education technology leaders across the nation named an Impact 30 Award recipient by the Consortium for School Networking. This award identifies education technology leaders who are currently making a difference for schools across the nation today, and who are the influencers for the next 30 years. Congratulations, Kyle. Thank you and the entire technology department for all you do to support our staff and students. And at this point, well, let's give Kyle a hand. He just signed like, clap. So this concludes the awards portion of our board meeting. Thank you to all of our award recipients for joining us this evening and letting us celebrate your accomplishments. And in just a few moments- And in just a few moments, I'll turn it back over to Board President Casey Ford. All right, next on the agenda is the public comment section. Kathy?
Next on the agenda is the public comment period of our board meeting. A public comment is an opportunity for individuals to directly address the Board of Trustees. It is a limited forum. Individuals wishing to participate must complete the request to speak form and submit it to the Executive Director of Communications, Nicole Lyons, at least 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. By completing the request to speak form, each speaker has acknowledged they will abide by the decorum protocol stated on such form. Generally, there is a three-minute time limit on individual presentations. However, the board has received 27 requests to speak, therefore each speaker will have one minute. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask, but is not required that a spokesperson be appointed to speak for the group. This is not the form to present allegations of employee misconduct, requests for employee discipline, lodging personal attacks, shaming, demeaning specific named GCISD employees, or unnecessarily disclosing private information about GCISD employees or students. The board will only consider personnel or student complaints that remain unresolved after they have been addressed through the grievance process and when they have been placed on the board agenda for hearing or action. Please see GCISD Board Policies DGBA, Employee, FNG, Students and Families, and GF Public. These policies are designed to secure a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns by allowing for a full hearing and investigation. Each of these procedures allows for an individual to redress grievances with the Board of Trustees. Upon request, our Executive Director of Communications will provide you with copies of these policies or you can find them online at the district website. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not included on the meeting's agenda and may not respond to comments made or questions asked during the public comment period. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered later in the meeting. Please understand that allowing speakers to make statements during the public comment period is not an endorsement of those statements by the board or district. The statements made by an individual are the opinion of that speaker and not necessarily the opinion of the board, individual trustees, or the district. We will call persons to speak in the order we receive their form. Our first speaker is Catherine Parks. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Yes, I am a resident. We moved here for the schools, but this board majority has brought chaos and embarrassing national attention to our district. I've lost count of the number of parents who I've heard say, we wonder whether our kids' special programs will even exist in the future. We're not being represented well when only 8% of residents decided the outcome of last year's election and when teachers are leaving GCISD at a rate twice the state average. But we do have the power to choose trustees who want to hold community forums and answer our questions, who have recent and relevant experience in our classrooms, who know that we excel not just by slashing and cutting our way into the future, but by working to find new sources of revenue and listening to our community to find compromises that work for all students. This board has decided everything unilaterally this year. Our students deserve better. We owe it to them to show them what excellence truly looks like. And that starts with trustees who value public education, collaboration, and compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Becca Garrett. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I'm a resident. Thank you, Coley, for all you've done for GCISD. Your smile brightens every room you walk into. I appreciate your willingness to listen to, partner with, and serve all parents, students, and teachers. Thank you, Jorge, for the tremendous amount of work you do behind the scenes that never makes it to this boardroom. You have been a steady calm in the storm. I am thankful we have you as a voice for our Spanish-speaking community. Thank you both for leading our community with integrity and honor. Your presence will be greatly missed. I want to thank you for the board for adopting the new reading curriculum from HMH. I love their DEI statement and feel after helping unpack the new resources, it is well reflected from their site. Learning is a fundamental right. We believe in social justice. We believe that the education system needs to change, and we will continue to use our platform to make that change. This critical work to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion is an inward and outward process. We are constantly seeking new ways to better our own culture as we strive to better our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Cindy Howard. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cindy, and I live in this district. Tonight, I speak on behalf of the thousand-plus members of the GCISD Parents Group. As retired teacher, our schools are very important to me. It's not important is the political grandstanding. I think these school board meetings have become reality TV dramas, and I won't participate in that. No one I know in the GCIC parents wants to participate in that either. What I do want is for our schools to return focus to academics. That's why I'm voting for the no drama, agenda-free candidates who believe in merit and support academic excellence. That would be my personal friend and fellow retired teacher, Mary Humphrey, the extremely qualified statesman and finance authority, Richard Newton, and the incredibly knowledgeable security expert and GCISD dad, A.J. Pontillo. This is the best team for our school district. Please visit GCISDnews.com for an up-to-date voter guide. That's GCISDnews.com. Thank you. See you at the polls.
Thank you. Our fourth speaker is Laura Trevino. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hi, my name is Laura Trevino. I'm a resident and parent. So today is the last board meeting for trustees Rodriguez and Cantor. I would like to thank both of them for their service. Coley has been a trustee for almost three years, and Jorge has been a trustee for 15 years. Coley, thank you for being a breath of fresh air. Your positivity, willingness to listen to all parents and advocate for all students while asking the hard questions on what is best for our kids did not go unnoticed. Jorge, thank you for your decade and a half worth of service. You have led our district through difficult times, including the 2008 recession and COVID. You did this while maintaining the quality of education we have come to expect in this district. I've appreciated your leadership and advocacy on behalf of all students. You've shown grace and compassion. Sorry, you've shown grace and compassion during tough times and have shown how to be a leader with a servant mindset. You have supported the students, administration, staff, and teachers, and listened to all parents' concerns, whether you agreed with them or not. I will sorely miss you both. Since you are the two of the three board members I feel listen to parents like me, please vote.
Thank you. Our fifth speaker is Ally Stiles. Please step to the microphone and state whether you are a resident of GCISD.
Yes, I am. Last summer, GCISD received via third-party an evaluation of the dual-language program. It included recommendations from 16 GCISD dual-language teachers as well as other educators who recommended that two-way dual-language continue as a program offering at GCISD. Administration excluded this report and its recommendations in their presentation delivered at the last board meeting. Once again, we were lied to. Throwing away money on evaluations we do not intend to utilize is a misuse of taxpayer funds. Making unilateral decision in direct opposition and to the exclusion of the teachers, students, and parents you were hired and elected to support will only serve to further dismantle what used to be an excellent school district and a top place to work. GCISD's excellent teachers are fleeing the district at an alarming rate. Statistically, most people don't quit their jobs, they quit their bosses.
Thank you. Our sixth speaker is Garrett Stiles. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Yes, I'm a resident. Last week, we received via public record a request, the bilingual education dual-language program evaluation for GCISD, a third-party audit of the program covering the last five school years. The recommendations presented within this evaluation entirely contradict the information presented by the administration at last month's board meeting. Thus, following proper protocol, two board members added the topic for inclusion in tonight's board meeting for continued discussion and action. Set of fulfilling their judiciary duties, Ford and Schnotts failed to add it to the agenda, a violation of board policy and TEA regulations. Why the school district and board would rather collect TEA violations than act in good faith in another discussion that defies logic? If GCISD is confident about its decisions, why all the deception?
Thank you. Our seventh speaker is Kimberly Davis. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I'm a resident. I had the pleasure of moderating a panel last night that was hosted by Protect GCISD and United for GCISD on the topic of this board majority's policy changes and the impact they're having on college admissions processes. The message was very clear that even if families don't think that these policies are impacting them because they can afford to buy the book on Amazon or because they are not part of the targeted group, they are clearly mistaken. We had two GCISD graduates that were admitted to Harvard and Stanford who recently navigated the process. We had parents, college admissions consultant, who talked about the reputation of a school district's impact on a student's admissions chances. And heartbreakingly, we had Amanda Guthrie, who left teaching mid-year because of our current climate. These will be online at United for GCISD and Protect GCISD, along with why we are encouraging parents to balance out our board by electing a current teacher, a retired teacher, and a past parent group president by electing Harris, Sager, and Phoenix.
Thank you. Our eighth speaker is Tammy Palins. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Before we speak, just a warning to the audience, ma'am in the white jacket, please refrain from clapping. It's violating, it's a violation of decorum. Thank you. This is the final warning.
I'm a resident. First of all, I want to thank Coley and Jorge for serving Grapevine Colleyville not only as trustees, but dedicated volunteers and parents, always looking for ways to support students and the staff who teach them. May the trustees who fill your seats be as worthy. May they respect educators and all students. May they be willing to tackle real issues, not spew false narratives. May they have a vision for 21st century skills, not lament the way education was decades ago. May they allow and demand a board that operates transparently as a body, listening to other ideas. May they operate legally and ethically rather than incurring $250,000 of redacted attorney bills from May 22 to February 23, only $46,000 being IPREP-related. I look forward to having current or recent educators or those active on our campuses in these seats. Coley and Jorge, thanks again and enjoy Monday nights.
Thank you. Our ninth speaker is Carrie Mamantov. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Yes, resident and parent. I'm also a disability advocate and a graduate of the Texas Partners in Policymaking cohort of 2023. I'm respectfully reminding the board how important it is to include the parent and student voices in all the decisions. It can affect all students, specifically the 12% of our student population in special education. I expect our board and administration to proactively communicate what our district is doing to ensure we will not end up in a position like Austin ISD or Houston ISD. Please be focused on those federally funded, the granting for federally funded students. This is the main funding for our PERS, to provide training for assistive technology, and to manage the contracted staff that manage our IEPs. Please consider more community involvement where our voices are included. And I want to say thank you to Coley and Jorge for always listening and to speaking up for our students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our 10th speaker is Amanda Hall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident of GCISD. The district-level committee that was formed to evaluate our dual-language program blatantly violated TEA policy. Subchapter F, Section 1125-1-C, states that we are required as parents and community members to be on the committee. We were not. 11.251-E says two-thirds of the professional staff must be in classroom teachers. Seven out of 27 were in classroom teachers. 11.252-F says the superintendent must be regularly consulted about the operation and evaluation of its committee. It was not. When we brought these concerns up to our superintendent, there was no response and certainly no recourse. Then we presented the board several times that your one and only employee did not do his job and overseeing that policies were followed by the TEA, and we were ignored. And I didn't receive one email from either of you. We were stonewalled. All we ask is that a new committee be formed that follows TEA procedure and gives parents the voice that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our 11th speaker is Carrie Hall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Yes, I'm a resident. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm a mother of a dual-language student at Silver Lake. I'm not going to stand up here and throw any more statistics at you. I know you as a board and superintendent have been shown all this factual data in supporting emails. I know it's also been proven that TEA codes, laws, and guidelines have not been followed, have been disregarded, but also blatantly broken. This has also been sent to you in numerous emails. I know that you know, I know that you're also ignoring your own bylaws and guidelines and rules as a board as to not putting dual-language program on the agenda for this meeting or even being it allowed to being voted on as a board is also a direct violation of your own laws. I'm a fighting parent. I have four children who will be put through this district, and it is my duty to make sure that they have every opportunity given to them. As a citizen, I'm pissed. Despite all the data proven that this is a successful model, you next to the program. You brought in a third party, and they, and by no means said to next to the program.
Thank you. Our 12th speaker is Rachel Wall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident. With the recent conversation regarding lawsuits involving GCISD, I looked up the status of the lawsuit filed against GCISD in 2021 styled Ryan versus Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District. Was surprised to note that on March 13, 2023, the parties notified the judge they had reached a settlement. You and your personal lawyer, Tim Davis, were at the settlement conference, Casey. The notice to the judge indicated GCISD's school board would need to approve the settlement. It would be put on the agenda for the May 2023 meeting. You didn't add it to the agenda for approval the next meeting, March 27, 2023. You didn't add it to tonight's agenda. You wanted to wait until after the election to tell the voters about the settlement. Why? Because you want to hide from GCISD voters that you reached a settlement to pay money to Mitchell Ryan and his attorney, Tony McDonald, who happens to be the General Counsel for Empower, Texas. Nice try.
Thank you. Our 13th speaker is Amanda Thode. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident of GCISD. I want to thank Jorge and Coley for how well they have served our district as trustees. They have shown up for our students and teachers, both in their actions on the school board, but also through their presence on campuses, at sporting events, and many other activities across our district, celebrating our students. They have advocated well for our students and teachers, and I'm so thankful for all that they have done for our district. I also want to talk about how important it is for our students and parents to be involved in the decisions that are currently being made about key programs in our district. My 18-year-old senior and several of their LGBTQ friends voted today for the first time because they understand the importance of using their voice to advocate for themselves and to make change for our district. It is essential that the voices of students and parents are included in decisions being made about key programs that have made GCISD a destination district.
Thank you. Our 14th speaker is Rosalba Pena. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD. I don't see her. We're going to move on. 15th speaker is Hillary Benedetto. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am Hillary Benedetto, and I have lived in Grapevine for 28 years. I want to thank Coley Cantor for her persistence in running for place five in 2020, starting in March, and winning in December. She has been a very active super volunteer, not only at her assigned schools, but at all campuses, as well as serving as the PTA Council Liaison. During contentious discussions, Coley asked important questions, listened to the community, and stood up for all our students and teachers in our district. Jorge Rodriguez has served five terms in place seven since 2008, including three years as president. He was in our 2018 Texas Outstanding School Board and has led our district through many successes. I want to thank Jorge for prioritizing the diverse educational needs of all of our students and not using them as political pawns. He has led our district to educate worldwide learners. I thanked Cantor and Rodriguez 45 minutes ago by voting for Harris, Sager, and Phoenix, ProtectGCISD.com.
Thank you. Our 16th speaker is Christine Leathers. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident and parent of GCISD. According to social media, GCISD is celebrating National Libraries Week. They quoted a student, "I love the library, and reading is one of my favorite things to do when I'm in school." Let that sink in. I won't argue if books are banned or not, but they are not being approved in a timely manner. manner. This policy passed in August. First book lists were approved in February. Six months of no new materials in our library. The list that was to be reproved tonight, removed from the agenda. Who's to blame? Board policy or execution of board policy? The website has a list of approved books and still no lists that can be donated. Can we donate approved books? Who knows? The Texas Blue Bonded Program began in 1981. I'm sure many of you participated as a child. It was fun. But we don't think that they know what resources our children should read. The board has to approve first. It is likely the first time in years our students will not have access to the entire list.
Thank you. Our 17th speaker is Adrienne McLean. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hi, yes, I am a resident. My name's Adrienne McLean. I am the PTA president this year at Heritage Elementary, and I'm here tonight to thank members of the board for your consideration of our PTA's donation of $60,000 for the construction of Phase One of an outdoor learning center at HES. We are so excited about this project. It started as a hope and an idea for a space adjacent to our current garden where our students could learn and collaborate outdoors, and it has developed into a beautiful design that we can't wait to have constructed. This is a multi-phase project. We've been told it's the first of our kind to be initiated and donated by a PTA here in GCISD. So I want to thank our HES community. They have been extremely generous, and through our fun runs last spring and this one, we have raised significant funds toward the entire project. I also want to thank our incredible principal, Jill Hemme. She has worked with me through every stage of this project. I'm so thankful for her, and also want to just thank the district employees who have met with our team and those who met beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our 18th speaker is Caitlin Dodd. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I'm Caitlin, and I am a resident of GCISD. First, I would like to thank trustees Rodriguez and Cantor for their service on the board and for always being willing to speak up for the teachers and students in this district. I am very concerned about the district's ability to hire and retain quality educators. It is being widely circulated in the news and on social media that our district has a 40% resignation rate and that many of those leaving teach in the AP or advanced courses. Anyone who has spent time in a classroom knows there is a significant difference between an experienced teacher and a new one. Teaching is a learning-as-you-go activity, and brand-new graduate teachers will no longer have the ability to lean on experienced teachers if they have all left. It is already well-known that this district pays significantly less than neighboring districts, but teachers used to come here because of the extra support provided. However, the district is plan, how is the district planning on filling those positions when policies have been created and passed, limiting a teacher's ability to instruct on current or historical events, or that they do not allow them to be their true and authentic selves? As teachers leave, the rigor will drop, and eventually our students won't be able to get into the colleges of their choice. Vote Harris, Phoenix, and Sager.
Thank you. Our 19th speaker is Julie McConaith. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Julie, and I am not a resident, but I am a 25-year teacher here in GCISD. For the first time in my time here, my students were allowed to take the National Latin Exam. Eight of them stepped forward and competed against 100,000 students worldwide, and all eight scored at national average or better, with one getting a gold medal. He only missed two questions. Another got a silver medal, and another placed, but she doesn't get a medal. But I just want to say my kids thought that it was a wonderful experience, and they're really sad the Latin's being phased out. Thank you.
Thank you. Our 20th speaker is Chris Kittle. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hello, I'm Dr. Chris Kittle, and I am not a resident of GCISD. I am the education lead of the Tarrant County Chapter of Citizens Defending Freedom. A number of progressive organizations are attempting to pressure school administrators to broaden the language of Title IX to include sexual orientation and gender ideology. This undermines federal law and the legislative authority of the United States Congress. The Supreme Court's ruling in Bostic versus Clayton County clearly stated this case was a Title VII issue and did not apply to Title IX or any other law. Further, a federal district court here in Texas affirmed that sexual orientation and gender ideology are not protected categories because Title IX must be read in the original context in which it was drafted in 1972, where sex was understood to be biological and binary. In the Bostic case, the Supreme Court stated that the Supreme, that the people's representatives are the ones who must amend Title IX, and therefore only Congress can do that. I've left you copies with more information. We also sent you an email with more information, and I urge you to take this information into account as you deliberate further action on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our 21st speaker is Gaye Grissom. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hi, Gaye Grissom, and yes, I'm a resident. I'm here tonight to talk about curriculum. I hear we don't have curriculum. I've heard that. I heard it again this, and the last time that we had the candidates last week with all of their stuff. I heard them say about there being no curriculum. I'm a little confused by that, because the state has what is called the TEACs, and the TEACs are our learning standards. And regardless of what we write, we have curriculum. This district has curriculum. They may not have all the resources next year because a lot of the curriculum folks and a lot of the support for the teachers is leaving, but we have it. I'm hoping that maybe they're, they're confused about curriculum and curriculum resources, because those are two different things. Parents, please know that we have curriculum here in this district.
Thank you. Our 22nd speaker is Valerie Coonert. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Yes, I'm a resident. I was just recently in DC and had time to stop by the Department of Education. I was reminded that the definition of public school is to help children fulfill their diverse potentials, enable students to become well-rounded individuals, focusing on the whole child and not just mastery of academic content. Prepare students to live a productive life and become good citizens while obeying the social and legal rules of society. Education is supposed to enrich lives by developing their capacities to think critically, appreciate different cultures, and maintain a sense of curiosity about the world. Education exposes children to new ways of thinking as opposed to thinking the way others want them to. I also want to thank Coley and Jorge for representing this definition and for supporting every child, not just supporting the ones that fit into your own molds. Thank you.
Thank you. Our 23rd speaker is Michael Quinn. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
These are truly confusing times, and it's hard to know who the good guys are. But if you look in the mirror and you're unsure whether or not you are one of those good guys, here's something that might help you. If you have a list of activist teachers that you call poison, you are not one of the good guys. If your response to a tough email from a constituent, me, is to try and stare them down at the next board meeting, then you are not one of the good guys. If you suspend Roberts' rules in order to ram a policy through with minimal public discussion, or gaslight about a balanced budget, or belittle other trustees in a local publication, or use taxpayer money to self-promote alleged board accomplishments, any, any combination of those things make it clear you aren't the good guys. Which time we got? All right. If you propagate a fake news narrative about a leftist dark money web, when on your side you have four different PACs sending out mail or supporting your candidates, then you're not one of the good guys. It's a load of crap. Basically, if you lie, misrepresent, cheat, call people disgusting names in order to win, then you are not one of the good guys. I hope this clears things up.
Thank you. 24th speaker is Beverly Mavis. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
This is your final warning. Next person who claps out loud or laughs and makes noise and disrupts this board meeting will be removed.
For three years, Coley has attended countless carnivals, meetings, sporting events, Special Olympics, and even subbed as a lunch lady. She listened and responded to all stakeholders and made informed decisions in the best interest of our students and staff. Thank you for your service. For 15 years, Jorge has worked to improve educational opportunities for all students. He was instrumental in working with parents to implement services for students with dyslexia, making a substantial difference for so many. His diligence and dedication to the needs of the entire community helped bring GCISD to destination district status. A huge thank you for all you've accomplished. These vacancies have a legacy and need to be filled by individuals equally passionate about public education, dedicated to serving all stakeholders, and determined to reverse the current downhill trends of overreach and extremism. Vote Harris, Sager, and Phoenix to protect GCISD.
Thank you. Our 25th speaker is Deborah Hurley. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD. Deborah Hurley? Okay, we're going to move on. 26th speaker is Doug Hood. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I'm Doug Hood. I live and teach in the district. My own two children are succeeding at high academic colleges right now because of GCISD. They had teachers that challenged them and that taught them how to think for themselves. But many of the resources that they had at their disposal have been cut for budget purposes. The teachers are now afraid to teach students how to think for themselves for fear of being called indoctrinators. And quality teachers are leaving the district, leaving the profession because of the toxic environment that now exists within our district and within our schools. So the things you guys are doing are not only detrimental to the staff, but they are very detrimental to the students who the staff work with, and the students are the future of our community. They're the ones that are going to lead us in the future, and they're the ones who are going to get us through what we are going to be facing. So keep that in mind as you're making new policies.
Thank you. Earlier I said there was 27 speakers. There was only 26, so this concludes public comment.
And next on the agenda, reports of the superintendent. Item A, Act on the Joint Election Agreement, action item. Dr. Schnouts.
Hey, Casey. Casey, can I have a make a comment? I just want to make sure that.
No, no, no comment.
About the agenda items.
Moving on to act. We're on item A.
But we, we, I asked for several items on the agenda.
On item A.
Yeah, well, I asked for several.
No comment from you, Jorge? We're on item A. You're violating decorum.
I requested, I requested items on the agenda that are on the agenda. I understand that.
Jorge, you're violating decorum.
But you didn't put items on the agenda.
Jorge, you're violating decorum.
I can, we could repeat that all night.
Dr. Schnouts, please get started.
I requested seven items on the agenda, and they were not added.
Jorge, you're violating decorum. You're violating decorum. Dr. Schnouts, please move forward.
I'm going to say it again, just to make sure that people understand.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
... across the district. Dr. Schnouts?
Thank you, Paula. The recommendation is for the Board of Trustees to approve the appropriation of $284,581 from undesignated 2016 bond funds for the upgrades to the district's Johnson Controls, Metasys system, and three-year service agreement to replace outdated controllers in the Allerton system.
Recommendation, you have a motion.
Make a move to, uh, accept Dr. Schnouts' recommendation.
Second? Ten seconds, comments? Maggie?
Um, I just had a couple of questions. So did we have maintenance in the past? And then what is the preventative maintenance plan going forward?
So that is the three-year service agreement that's included in here to do that. That is not something that we've had in the budget, uh, previously, correct?
So you think that'll help?
It will as to this equipment. Um, if you notice, Johnson has really got the smaller footprint in our district, and that's for a reason. It's been a kind of an expensive system. Allerton is a lot less expensive, and with the last two bond programs, the district has basically been migrating away from that where it could.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Paula, I know, um, so is this a software issue, a hardware issue, or both? And the question I'm asking this, and that's the next question, is did they give you any kind of estimate on the lifespan that we could expect out of this now? Because I know what I'm seeing out in the technology world is that, um, manufacturers of anything, whether it is a home security camera system you buy at Costco, um, your phone, whatever, the, um, manufacturers are purposefully limiting the lifespan of these things so that, oh my gosh, now I've gotta go buy another one. Um, did they give you the idea of what the timeframe to expect these things to last? And how long will support this?
So the answer to the first question is yes, both software and hardware involved here. Uh, when you're talking about the Metasys system, as I mentioned before, it's the server, the software, as well as the network engines. On the other system, it, it is about those control modules that are speaking, basically carrying the messages all across that system itself. So it's hardware and software as far as that system is concerned as well. I don't, yeah, I wasn't given specifically the lifespan, anticipated lifespan of these ACMs, for example, that we're talking about replacing the VCMs have been there for a long period of time. To your point, yes, we're seeing things go for a lesser period of time in terms of being, um, supported, software-wise, or even hardware replacement-wise, um, and where you just can't find the parts themselves. And so I know that Mike, um, bought one off an OEM, OEM market and stuck it in his drawer. So he'd have a swap part when he needed to, but, um, I don't have that. I guess that's something that he may know that I can ask, uh, to see what they might have indicated.
Yeah, I, I would like to know the answer to that, because I think it's gonna be critical, um, as we continue to move down the path, particularly for bond planning, but, you know, that's a huge expense for districts as these manufacturers shorten that lifespan of the things that, you know, we now need just to, just to run a school district on a daily basis.
All those in favor? Jorge? Motion passes seven zero. Uh, next item on the agenda is Act on Revision to Board Policy DMC Local, Professional Development, Continued Professional Education.
Yeah, so this item covers revisions to Policy DMC Local. Paula, leave us through this.
Absolutely. So the primary change here, uh, to this policy, which has to do with professional development in our district, has to do with the number of flex dates that are mentioned in that policy. Currently, it's states two, and the recently adopted instructional calendar for students and staff would include up to four flex days. Flex has been a program in our district for a number of years. It's a way for our staff to be able to, uh, acquire additional PD, um, on days when they're not necessarily in a classroom or having to take time off from the classroom or in another district or campus-wide training, if you will. So part of the change is, uh, to align the policy with the instructional calendar that the board did adopt. The other two items are fairly minor, but they're kind of clean up, if you will. So in the very first paragraph of that, uh, policy, we removed references to things like, uh, training on blood-borne pathogens, et cetera, and referenced now what is the Aspect Clearinghouse that really dictates all of that mandatory training that would be there. So that cleans up that part of the policy. And then there was an outdated term. While you're doing these things, you may as well take care of the other. There used to be a reference to a professional learning plan. Now there are annual learning goals for all of our staff, and so that's just a cleanup piece there. Dr. Schnouts?
Yes, so the recommendations for the Board of Trustees to approve the revisions to Board Policy DMC Local as presented.
Have a recommendation, have a motion. Paul?
I may do accept Dr. Schnouts' recommendation.
Second, 30 seconds. All those in favor, show your hands. Motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, Act on Revisions to Board Policy DMC Local, Compensation of Benefits, Leaves and Absences.
We don't want to be fading, Colleen. Talk to it. All right. So another policy item, uh, this time revisions to DMC Local. Paula?
Colleen, okay.
Touche.
So the proposed-
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, yes, that too. Really out of left field, but not bad, okay. So, um, this policy change has to do with our full-time district employees and adding something that has actually been in discussion, and, and this is really Gemma's work, Gemma and Dave, in the human resources area, more so I'm just bringing forth the policy change. And that is to bring forward a wellness day, um, for all full-time employees of the district. And so that is an item that would be added to this policy where other types of leaves and absences can be there. Um, and the other change has to do with subpoenas, um, something that we're trying to fend off or guard against, if you will. Quite honestly, something that, uh, may have occurred in a, in another school district, and so we're just trying to be prepared while we're also touching this policy for one reason, we may as well take care of the other. So currently, if an employee has served with a valid subpoena, um, they do not have to use their personal leave in order to be in court for the days that they've been, uh, required to be there by the court, right? Um, however, if you're a party to a lawsuit, um, you don't normally receive a subpoena, but there are some people who have been subpoenaed by their own attorneys when they were one or the other party in the lawsuit. And so we're updating the policy to say that if you are a party to the lawsuit and you receive a valid subpoena, you're not gonna be compensated by the district for your time in court. You would have to use one of your personal days or vacation time to take care of that.
Thank you, Paula. The recommendation is for the Board of Trustees to approve the revisions to Board Policy DMC Local as presented.
I have a recommendation, not a motion.
Make a motion to accept Dr. Schnouts' recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Comments? Thank you.
So Paula, I have a concern, though, about the board appearances, um, because, you know, we've had, you know, any number of special ed suits in which our employees are called, um, because sometimes they're named and or they're called. How's this gonna affect them? Are our employees now not?
No, absolutely not. Again, this is only where they may have initiated a lawsuit, or they are part of, uh, a lawsuit on the other side of that coin. Um, it, this is not when our staff or anybody in the district is being called, basically because of the scope and duties that they have to be, uh, at court to provide that information or to testify. So a valid subpoena for those reasons would be covered like it has in the past.
Is there a way to clarify this language, though, to show that? Because right now it just says, except if the employee is a party to the suit. I mean, there's not a way to say what suit that is.
If you're a party to a suit, you're either plaintiff or defendant, as an example.
Right, but if they're named, like, like-
You mean if they're sued in their capacity?
Right, yeah, I mean, we've, we've had any number of times, you know-
Because of their, their work in the district.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I'm kinda stuck here.
We can certainly, um, I'm look, I've moved over to the page where that is, I'm having a few computer issues. I believe that's page 26 there of the packet. Let's go over down.
It's the last page of that figure original item.
This is what I have. It's 28. I have, I hope I can remember.
And the other part is great. The wellness day is awesome. But I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of the, of the rest of the policy.
Okay, or it says, except if the employee is a party to the lawsuit. And we would need to clarify, as you were saying, not when they are a party to the lawsuit because they've been sued as a part of a member of the district or in their individual capacity, uh, in their scope and role of the district. So we, we'll just have to think about what would the appropriate language would be to further clarify, uh, or make the distinction of party, being a party to a lawsuit.
So how, when would we, do we need, um, a limited motion then?
We would to do that, yes, ma'am, or, um, you can also table it and bring it back next month.
We can do that.
You can approve the other.
I'd like to recommend that, just, just because that'll give us some time to get the language right, and-
Or, or just because it might be a recruitment tool, since we're looking to fill so many positions. Do you want us to strike that language? Or it's up to you, right? Uh, we can either table it, or we can add something else about that language.
I, I really like to give Paula some time to, to kinda get this right, and, and we can bring it back to you guys at the next opportunity.
Okay. I just, I didn't take the consequence, you got the-
Yeah, that's, that's a great point.
So you're tabling the entire item instead of approving the wellness portion, but for the jury portion?
Yeah, let's, let's just table it completely, and then we'll bring it back altogether at the next opportunity.
Doesn't hurt, this, we're, doesn't- Be right back. Jim, will this, will this be okay to wait to the next meeting to get that qualified? I would just really especially hate for, I mean, on one hand, hey, there's this great piece, but on the other hand, oh my gosh, if you get named as a party to a suit in the scope of your job, you know, as can happen, then it's, so.
Sure, good point. So I make a motion to table this item until the next meeting. All those in favor? Show your hands.
I can make a motion, I suppose, but, um, I, I, we already had a motion, you know, we needed, we two of them made a motion, and the second one we need to draw.
We can, at any time, you can make a motion to just table it.
Okay.
You have 37 on the table, you just table it for the next meeting. Show your hands. Motion passes. Is your hand up, Peggy?
Yeah, I'm fine with tabling it. I just don't really follow by our tools.
So on the agenda, so that motion will be tabled for the next meeting. Uh, next on the agenda, informational item, 2023 Long Range Planning Update for Facilities and Capital.
So we've been, uh, going through our LRPC meetings this, this spring. Paula's been doing our same job, leading us through that, and so, um, I'm gonna turn it over to her to kinda give us an update on our long-range planning committee work.
Thank you, um, trustees, as you're aware, you receive, uh, updates after each meeting, brief updates, that is, and then we've periodically come to you, and I think the last update that I gave about this part of the process was in February. And so since that time, there've been several more meetings. Um, as a matter of fact, um, we've had a total of seven meetings, uh, for this committee, uh, as recently as last week, they met on Thursday. And so just to kinda recap a little bit, in those first several meetings, they heard from district leaders, right, that were trying to put some context and help, um, people understand members of the committee, kind of what might be coming to them, uh, by way of understanding things about the district, placing that context around the requests that they would see in the, in the long list of requests, um, for a future bond program, and certainly as a part of the district's just long-range planning. So there was information about the condition of facilities and infrastructure, compliance requirements, and changes of the educational program and needs of the district in, in that regard, as well as just kind of all the other things that you can think about, certainly safety and technology, um, safety and security and technology being a part of that. And then after that, there were presentations on the items that are kind of outlined, um, in your packet there on page 29, right? So they heard from the district's demographer, they heard from educational services, athletics, fine arts. Um, in the area of operations, they heard from emergency management's, uh, safety and security, risk management. We, we talked about infrastructure and conditions again, uh, talked about our fleet and food service equipment, site and grounds. Uh, Kyle gave a presentation on technology, that would be both instructional and business technology. And then there was a presentation from the interim CFO with regard to finance to help them understand a little bit, um, about the complexities of school finance. Um, they took a look at what area tax rates are, and, um, you know, we, they talked at, at some about the maintenance and operating budget of the district, and then the role of the interest and sinking plan. In the beginning, with the last two meetings, uh, after getting all of that, the committee had an opportunity to start looking through the very long list of items. We're talking, uh, thousands of items in total, um, divided up into four groups. So there are four subcommittees of the, the full group that are looking at a certain scope. And so I included in that sheet kind of the division of work, right? We have an area that's kind of focused on core academics and one on aging facilities and so forth. There's a total of 2,758 line items in the complete spreadsheet of, of what it is that they will look at over the course of time. Um, and so their work began to kind of begin to score using the grading rubric that you see in your packet that was included. That's a grading rubric that they, as a committee, approved, um, as a way to score those line items, and they score every line item with a score of zero to five in each one of those five rubric areas as they go through the process. So at the last meeting, um, they were able to see the results of their work for elementary schools and middle schools. They are now currently working on the grading or scoring of high schools and all other facilities and departments within the district in terms of those requests. And so they had an opportunity to share out from their subcommittees with the rest of the committee, kind of what they saw as their top 10 priorities, uh, trying to give an idea, kind of a theme, if you will, about the things that were rising to the top as far as their highest ranking priority, uh, is concerned for those elementary schools and the middle schools. So I want you to imagine, if you will, um, a number of people trying to come in, and in about four or five meetings, learn as much as they can about everything in the district, and then bringing their lens to the list of all the requests and needs, from core academics to whether to buy school buses, to replace outdated school buses, all the issues with facilities, demogra, you know, looking at drainage issues, the demographics of the students' population and so forth, um, and then trying to grade all of that out. And so I have to commend them because they've, they've been fearless in doing it, and they've done an excellent job trying to work through that. Um, they will have an opportunity at the next meeting to see the results of their work on high schools and other facilities, um, and make adjustments, ask questions of each other as they did last week, um, and begin to present to each other kind of what they see as being those highest priorities from their specific subcommittee lens, and that is leading up to the point where it all becomes merged together, and we basically, um, see a ranking, if you will, of all of those line items into, into a priority list that is really a priority list for the next decade for the district. How that would parlay into future bond programs is yet to be seen. That's another committee that will kick off in the August time period. Right now, this kind of gives you the, the priorities through their lens, if you will, of all of those items. The other thing is the district has been working internally with what I call the deficiencies package, really tried to take some of the absolute must-have, uh, that the district knows of because of the day-to-day operations, and I gave examples of what that would be. And the district, that would be the facilities and construction team in concert with me. We've identified kind of what the priorities are there. That's kind of gonna be a baseline of projects again for that decade, and so it includes taking care of roofs, for example, where we have existing leaks. The deficiencies list is not to add something, but it is to take care of those things that are potentially impacting instruction. Replacing rooftop units where we can't get the refrigerant anymore, or it's very scarce, meaning TEA mandates for safety and security and those types of things. That's been presented to the committee, uh, in part, and they've, uh, heard about it a couple of times. They have a spreadsheet. They also have kind of a cheat sheet that leads them through that spreadsheet of yet other line items, uh, that they will have an opportunity to weigh in on. So it will still be their work to agree with or disagree with that package of items. So as a reminder, every one of these meetings has a posted agenda that's on the district's website. Anyone can go there to view the video, can see the summary, meeting minutes of the work, uh, any presentations or handouts that were given, and if there were questions and answers, they're able to, to see that. So the T's amount of work for them up to this point, um, they've probably spent 10 and a half hours in meetings and somewhere in the neighborhood, and, and I'm being conservative, here of six to eight hours of homework that they've performed on their own to be able to turn in the items that we need. They still have, um, probably six more hours of meetings to go and a little bit more homework. But again, the end, the end focus of this process is to have that prioritized list, looking out a decade in terms of the district's needs from a, a capital perspective. By the time we get it to the next committee, uh, which will kick off in August, as I mentioned, uh, Huckabee will have been able to put more refined costs on that, will have a better idea of some of those descriptions. I'm not talking about having a defined scope, because that's not the point at where we at, where we are, but it would allow us to have a little bit better understanding of each one of those line items, because we'll be able to focus on fewer line items now to kind of refine those before we kick off the next committee.
Dr. Schnouts?
Thank you, Paula.
You promise? Paula, thank you very much. Go ahead.
I just, I, I'm getting kind of regular feedback from the, the, one of the guys that I nominated, and he is loving the experience. It's so well-organized, it's so well-run, everybody is felt, is feeling heard, and, um, so I just, I, being in the 2016, I love the way you're doing it this time. So thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
And to your team.
Thank you.
Goodness gracious. So how many line items was that in the poll?
2,758 line items.
I had 2,000, but I felt that was, uh, was a lot, so, yeah, actually, 2,000. Do, um, I know this is pretty robust on the website, but kind of speaking to some of the concerns that were expressed earlier about, um, committee makeup and making sure that we're in compliance with, um, TEA guidelines and, um, committee member makeup. Have we had anybody drop off of the committee, and are we keeping, um, are we keeping a tally of attendance, so to speak, of the people that are coming to this, so that we ensure that we're not, um, getting lopsided in, say, the number of staff versus the number of committee people, um, that are on this? Because that's the one thing that I don't see on the website, is a list of all the members, and I'm just curious if we had, if we've had anybody drop off, and then also if we're taking attendance, so we know who's attending the meetings.
We do take attendance at every meeting, so I can account for all of the committee members as well as the liaisons that attend. Um, in addition to that, um, your question is whether or not we've had anybody drop off. Yes, we did have one individual, a parent, unfortunately, who made the decision to remove himself from the committee. Um, so I didn't feel like one created too much of a lopsidedness. Um, however, and part of that is, is also the timing, because of the amount of stuff that had already been presented, um, you know, at that point in moving into the next point of the work. It was unfortunate, and, um, wish that that would have been a different decision if that person did do that. We have since had, last week, we had another individual who, unfortunately, uh, the work schedule changed for that person who's now gonna have to be at work in the evenings and is not gonna be able to, um, attend, uh, but has basically brought up to speed another person who presented themselves at the meeting last Thursday. I sat and spoke with that individual to kind of see what their level of understanding was. Uh, I did not make any decisions. I simply welcomed her and invited that individual to sit and listen off to the side, um, as far as participation is concerned. Um, in my mind, the way that we would address this, again, this is just a committee that is putting together kind of that decade view of priorities. Um, the work is going to continue from this committee to the next committee, and I think, you know, we had a, I had outlined kind of what the committee would look like, the Bond Advisory Committee. We may, we may be adding a, a few additional people to that committee in order to, to round things out. Um, if you'll remember that part of that process, too, is to allow at least up to four people to basically seek to, to be added to the committee from anywhere out large in the community. We haven't, we haven't done that yet, because that's something that we would do, um, in the summertime on our way to that committee, which will kick off in August. And I say the meetings will kick off in August. We will, uh, attempt to do some tours of facilities in August, um, right at the end of July, first of August, so they, um, can get to all of our facilities over a two-day period. We're trying to figure out exactly when that would happen, but it needs to be before students or staff are back at work, and certainly because we have staff members that will be on the committee, and, um, they can't, you know, we're not taking them off the job, if you will, to go tour other facilities. So we'll, we'll attempt to address it more so that way, because of how far down the road we are at this point.
I, I just, I know that, um, there's at least one, um, of the members of the district employees who is, you know, retiring, um, off the, so, for mercy. who is, you know, retiring off the subcommittee.
He is not a member.
Oh, he's listed.
He is a liaison.
Oh, he's a liaison.
He is there to lend his expertise if there's a particular question in that area. And Candace McGowan has been attending with him.
Okay. So, okay, then actually, can, can we get one of the resources posted then to be the list of the members and the, just get all that broken out so we have an idea? So, because I would have assumed off of this that the people that are listed as the liaisons are actually on the subcommittees.
There are a couple of names there. Dr. Shiber plays a dual role. She's actually a member and she is a liaison just because of her expertise in overseeing the schools themselves. So there are some people in dual roles. Most of those people, for example, myself, I'm a facilitator. I have no vote. I have no say in anything. I'm simply a liaison. So yes, we can give you that list again of committee members.
Yeah, I just think it would clear up the, you know, it would just make it really transparent that we know, you know, who all is participating and what everybody's roles are. So I would just recommend that that would be another resource that's added. So especially, you know, if we're looking at staff here, myself, I work during the day. I don't have the opportunity to drop into admin and say, hey, I was on a meeting or anything, but it would be nice to know who the other members of the committee are as well. So just the full, the full list.
Paula, have we, have we had people in the past on committees that dropped and we've been able to replace them?
Well, I certainly don't facilitate every committee across the district. So I'm only going to speak to the ones that I've dealt with. I've had people drop in the past. I have not always replaced them depending on how far we were into the process. If it had been the first meeting or two, that would have been a different scenario.
So if we have to do it, it's not too cumbersome, but we don't need to, you know, you haven't added two in the past. Okay, cool. And that's all I have. Next item on the agenda, review trustees, continuing education. We have for this review, Colleen, me and Jorge did it in October, so we're good. We're clear. We have Shannon. She met her hours. Becky met her hours. Kathy Scrathery met her hours. And Tammy Nakemar is in first place and met her hours. Next item is review trustees. Just did that. Budget update 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024.
All right. Here to lead us into our most recent budget update to take a look and review upon current year 22, 23, but also give us a look ahead on 23, 24 budget interim CFO, Richard Mackey.
That is how trained Nicole. She got right up here and got it going. Thanks, Nicole. Also wanted to mention Derek Sibley, the new CFO, reported today. We worked all day and a quick study of where we are on both budgets. My wife had questioned, so why isn't he doing the presentation tonight? And then she landed on, I just liked the attention. So anyway, we're gonna work through this budget update. I really appreciate Dr. Schnouts allowing me to combine both the projected for 22, 23 and the 23, 24. They tie together and I wasn't going to get up here one time, and so we're gonna do them all at once. We have talked about the detailed revenue at other board meetings. Last board meeting, we spent a lot of time on each one of those. I wanted to line them up, the original, the projected, the preliminary budgets. We're gonna go through the revenue and I want to just point out some, some differences. First of all, you know, the first four line items with local taxes is all equalized. You get a little bit of money on your golden pennies. The increase of about $6 million on the local taxes in this year from the original budget, really only 240,000 is that close to bottom line. So really, where it looks like we're really picking up some money, it's, it's really not a lot of money. And you'll see the big recapture payment that we get to at the end. I guess the biggest thing is then the next one, earning from investments. We, we're gonna hit 4.5 million in this budget. That's a positive variance. That's a good thing. It's gonna offset some of those other things that are negative. And as we get to the bottom line, we'll, we'll talk through the specifics on that. And we've estimated it going up a little bit more. Of course, that's continued on some other things set by the feds, but we've increased that 500,000. And I think if interest holds where it is right now, that'll be easily attained also. Tuition and fees, pretty flat. Same with receipts. We're keeping that. The next one, the extended daycare program, we mentioned that last time. It's, looks like it's coming in on budget this year. We lost two federal grants. We're gonna talk about that when we get into the 23, 24 budget. You see that income coming up to 3.4 million. Because we lost the federal grants, we're gonna have to look at the tuition rates. We want it balanced. We want it to offset each other revenue and expenditures. And you're gonna see some increases in that particular program, too, down in the appropriations. The other items going down through there are pretty consistent to what we talked to. They're pretty flat. I don't think I've shown the insurance recovery that was booked earlier this year. There's an offset in the appropriations. We picked up just a small amount of that in the general fund. And Paula tried to grab it, but it's already in the general fund. So there you go, Paula. The state sources, state sources, the available school fund, you know, we talked about that big increase the state was giving us through the per capita amount. It's also a part of the recapture formula. So it goes up, recapture goes up. Next year, as available school fund goes down, recapture goes down. So there's not a lot of money to be picked up in the available school fund. I guess the biggest hit to this 22, 23 budget was simply in the foundation fund where enrollment didn't, not quite materialize to the point that we thought it would. And we lost the formula transition money. And so when you look at the bottom line, where we are with the formula transition money going away, you know, we've done all right in other places. But that's sort of a, that was a really strong hit. We are out of formula transition money. The 5.98 that will come back through the foundation school fund is really mostly the guaranteed yield. There's some, a little bit of the money in that, but it's mainly from, from the golden pennies and the state's portion of what they, they give us for each golden penny. And that amount now is up to two, a little over $2 million per golden penny. And I didn't mention it, but in the 23, 24 budget, all the numbers that you saw on tax revenue included putting that fifth golden penny in there. We went ahead and slotted that. That's not a given. You set the tax rate in August. You can have some discussions on that later on, but that's pretty much where it, before we start, we have as a starting point. The flood control payment, we estimated that aggressively. We had, we had had that for three or four years, up to its highs, I think, 1.8 million. The, it didn't come in this year. It didn't come in last year. We put in a million for next year. But I talked to the comptroller's office today, not that I'm gonna tell you what the number's gonna be, but we figured out how you get it. The, when the lake was put in, there was taxable money that was taken by the Corps of Engineers. So we lost tax revenue from that. Because we lost tax revenue from that, the Corps of Engineers, along with the Office of Natural Resources, said what we get up through mineral rights, through federal programs, through the interest that's earned on these funds throughout the year will then be divided up among the entities on an allocation basis. So my question to them was, well, it appears to me with interest up, just on interest alone, that money coming in, shouldn't that tick up next year? And she said, no, that sounds reasonable. So, but that is a gift, if you will, that other school districts don't receive. But then again, they have all their taxable value also. But that's the story on the flood control payment. Other federal funds, we lost a small grant, I believe, that in that federal, other federal revenues as part of the extended daycare program. We let it charge the same. We did not put anything in for sale of real personal property. So, so I put all the revenue together coming across. You can see that the, you would think we're gonna be really ahead because of that projected budget on total revenue of all sources going up from 193 to 198. But again, it was all offset revenue and there was available school fund along with tax revenue that's equalized. And then the big loss of the formula transition money. And then we're estimating it going up a million four, million five for next year in the 23, 24 budget. Putting it all together, let's just talk about 22, 23, where we were with the original budget. Originally set up with a balanced budget. We've talked in previous meetings when I came to you in January, I believe that was a little bit over 7 million. We're gonna let some things settle out. But the adjustments in the amendment are gonna be up in the state revenue number where we're gonna make an adjustment. You're gonna need to make an adjustment for the tax revenue. Appropriations, pretty flat, pretty close. The big number is we're gonna need to make the adjustment on the recapture payment, which we make in August. We will accrue that expense in June, and then we'll make the payment in August. And there's some legislative discussion on the recapture payment and how that's made. We'll talk about that when we get the legislation. But right now, we're protecting it falling to 5.8. Maybe, maybe attendance will be up in our last two, six weeks. This is through the fourth six weeks. We're ready to be up to the fifth. I thought that'd be a great project for Derek. And so we will start estimating head revenues and wrapping up what we think the expenditures are. And then have a bunch of amendments in May. And then I would suggest you probably look at a few amendments probably in June, just to make sure that you settle out your balance. And you're not overspending in any particular function, which we're clear right now. But again, the big hits are the recapture where you hadn't made it and it's up in revenue. So appreciate Mr. Rodriguez asking me about that so I could think about it and understand where you're going with that. Any questions on 22, 23 before we go to 23, 24?
Yeah. So if you wouldn't refresh my memory, since we're looking at now 6 million deficit on this, and so that's all gonna have to come out of fund balance, what is the, what's the number that we have to shoot for to keep in fund balance? Because this will drop it down to 43 million since this is in balance.
Right, right. I, I think with the, the numbers I looked at and how it was calculated last year, it's gonna be right, right above 37 million. I think there's still some capacity within that. I think that's a strategy. Might be able to use another year, but I don't know if you want to try it. But there is a little bit of fund balance.
But 37 is, is the?
Yes, just the target.
The cliff. Okay, thanks.
And not, not that I'm proposing to do this. I, I think the board has the option to change that policy on what you want to fund balance to be. But I wouldn't want to offer that up. And T E A has some guidelines and I wouldn't stay with that. But that's a self-imposed, and it's, it's a good thing for schools. We've had it everywhere I've been. Anything else on 22, 23?
I have a question. On the formula transition grant, were we expecting to get the military transition grant this year?
Yes.
Okay. Just, again, not a math person, so I just know we were expecting it. I'm, I, we can't go, I'm trying to remember why we put it in there and why it's not coming up. Just, I'm just trying to think of that.
Okay. I'm gonna answer in the next board meeting. Derek can change that up because he'll probably maybe just say it a little bit better. But formula transition money, with COVID coming in, ADAs were, were held harmless coming across there, held harmless. So you got some guaranteed ADA. Our ADA fell, you know, attendance and all those things for two years, but we were held harmless because we had that ADA number sitting there. And they guaranteed that you, you couldn't, you, you were guaranteed the revenue that you had earned back in those years per student.
I know.
Okay. That, that became a, a real number that, that, that schools were held harmless. And there's, it's good districts all over the state that are reaping the rewards of that. As their enrollment goes up, they get that guaranteed amount. So they're, they're making money off the formula transition money. As our enrollment or as our attendance fell, this was the year that we came out of that whole harmless for ADA. So our real ADA counted. And, but last year, we wouldn't have gotten as much formula transition if we hadn't been held harmless on ADA. Because that fell, that, and the tax revenue went up. See, our tax revenue really went up, which is a part of that formula also. They say you're getting tax money, so you don't need the formula transition money.
How was the formula transitions grant? How was it attached to ADA? Like, did we have to, was there a certain goal that we had put in the budget?
It, it's what we had earned in revenue in previous years per student with everything combined. I think it was like $8,100. And so they set a revenue target, a target number that you, if your revenue doesn't overcome that by per student, then you keep getting that amount. But as, and as your revenue go, as your enrollment goes up, as your ADA goes up, then you get that additional money, your, the target level goes up and you get more money. Our enrollment went down a little bit. Our attendance went down. And so, and then our tax revenue went up, which means we're collecting more money. And so the formula transition money disappeared.
Can you remind us what we were expecting to get from that?
4.5 million was in the shooting budget.
And that was based on the parameters that we set on attendance and enrollment?
And enrollment.
And both of those?
And, and our tax revenue. We had a lower tax revenue. We had 155 million in tax revenue, so generating less money.
Okay. So those, those the parameters?
That's the parameters. And you say, well, I thought revenue was offset by recapture. Well, recapture is 38% of that. So, so in essence, your, your total amount of the pie is the sun.
Okay, thank you.
So Rich, they, they did that for every school district?
Yes.
That was on formula transition?
That's right.
They did that calculation. So if you, yeah, if you had attendance that was great, that was awesome?
Right.
And if you had attendance?
And the Dalises and the, and, and, and the districts that really struggled a little bit with attendance, with enrollment, with, with all those things, that, they were really hit hard when, when they came out of that whole harmless period for their ADA and, and as their values go up.
Yeah, because they were pretty clear that they weren't gonna have ASATAR 2.0.
That's right. Now, I've, I've seen where they're, they're looking at, because there's a big push for those high-growth districts. Man, this is, this is some good money. I mean, I mean, they've set the floor. They've set the amount per student. If you don't have a lot of property value growth, but you have enrollment growth, you can really make a little bit of money and, and it worked out for you.
Yeah. My only comment is I just wanna, I wanna thank administration and Dr. Schnouts and Gemma and team for actually working really hard and doing a great job this year. We have revenue hit. The only thing you're off is your expenses, about 1.3 million, less than a percent on a $198 million budget. Kudos to you guys for working hard, doing a good job and making tough decisions. Let's go ahead to the next budget.
Compared the 23, 24 to just the projected budget for this year, I thought that was a, a nice walk, crosswalk for us to, to look at. We put the, you can see the local revenue and we talked about putting the extra cent in there. State's gonna decline. We've talked about all that revenue, so it's only going up 1.6. I guess the big number on that whole sheet, you can hit it and then go to the bottom line and say, what do you want to do? But the payroll cost as we ran it was 9.1 million up. I've got a slide next that breaks that down, the why it went up after we talked just about a 4% raise. The, the other number that, that you're gonna see is on the recapture payment. It's, it's going down. That's the results of the basic allotment going up. And, and we did pick up some programs. Uh, we, we've increased IU prep and, and maybe been a little aggressive on, on, uh, attendance and enrollment. But it seems to be holding firm right now and, uh, to the micro, we, we worked on his number, so I feel pretty good about that. Uh, but, yeah, seven point two million. Uh, the, the thing that I'm encouraged about where we are in the line of twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-two, twenty-three is really, if you rolled the twenty-two, twenty-three forward and then, uh, gave a nine million dollar payroll increase due to some things that we'll talk about in just a minute. Going to seven point two is, is not a, a bad start before you start trying to, to, to understand how you're going to balance. Because as we've talked about, you, you don't have room for that seven point two with, with the, uh, with the fund balance. So, so that's where the, the work's ahead for us. But I'm, we're going to talk about a few solutions to that or opportunities you might have to, to get that back squared up. Uh, payroll cost increase, nine point one six. Uh, here's what we did on payroll. We rolled everybody forward and, and we know that there's going to be a so, adjustments in staffing. Uh, but, but I wanted to get a true number. We, uh, we rolled everything, uh, forward. We gave everybody that we rolled forward the raise. We made the equity adjustments that Tazby also suggested. Uh, a part of that that we didn't mention when we were talking about payroll increase is a certain percent, just the employer portion of TRS. So that added a three twenty-seven. Uh, and then, uh, after we went through the Tazby study and, and talking more, uh, there was the discussion about putting in the cust- custodial pay increase to get them up to market value on the hourly rate. So that's, uh, filling all those positions and also, uh, giving them a, a little push on their hourly rate. The early childhood and the extended daycare program, uh, those will, will offset up in revenue, but we show them down expenditures because they will be cost, it will come back to the general fund from a federal grant. Uh, and then the other big number is the two point four million from the ESER funds that we, uh, took away from the general fund to the ESER fund. And now ESER money is used up and so it needs to come back to the general fund. So, uh, a little, uh, bothering, bothering Peter to take all, but, uh, uh, it, it did give a one-year opportunity to, uh, to reduce the general, uh, general fund. Any questions on the payroll cost? Okay, this is address the budget deficit. The, the deal is you, you, you create it and then you, you say, how, what's our way out? Each golden penny, I mentioned earlier, you get, uh, a little bit more from the state on the guaranteed yield. Uh, so you get a little bit over two million on each golden penny. Uh, we've put one of those in there, so two million is, is already in the, in that budget that showed the seven million dollar deficit. Uh, the legislature looks like they're going to approve the sixth gold penny. Man, I told somebody that'd never happen in my lifetime. I hope that's not foreshadowing any time, but, uh, it looks like, uh, it looks like they're going to give the sixth golden penny, uh, at the option of the, of the board trustees. Uh, the seventh and eighth golden penny, that's another four million, uh, that would, uh, require a voter. Uh, and, uh, and the, the time to decide that isn't now and it's not next month either, but, uh, but that's how much it would drive. It looks like they're going to go with special populations based on enrollment. That, that would give four hundred and forty thousand in those special pop areas where their enrollment, because there's a sins of their day that is, uh, that they'll be there, whether they are or not. And, uh, that number is, I think, a conservative number from, from, uh, us working with the template. Uh, but that might be refined a little bit after they have their final, uh, decision on that. And then another big number, the payroll cost reductions, I think I showed you over two million last time. I think a more realistic target is, is, is one point five million and that's simply through attrition, through, uh, unfilled positions, through rolling the budget forward. Uh, you should have some kind of, uh, payroll reduction and it should be somewhere around one point five million. Uh, as you get closer to the end of the school year, you can, uh, you can continue to look at that number and, and, uh, uh, see if that's realistic. And then I put in the interest, interest revenue of another five hundred thousand, I think that's a, an opportunity too. So, if you got the two and, uh, let, let's discount the four, the two and, uh, and then another two million with the, uh, special pops and the payroll. That's four, four and a half. So, uh, so, so you could be getting down it within shouting distance of the, of the seven million and, and, and maybe hope that ADA came in or, or, uh, payroll cost was, was reduced a little bit. I'm not sure there's going to be any more help, uh, from the legislature other than, uh, heard today that they'll give, they're looking at doing a four percent, uh, uh, windfall to recapture districts if you pay your recapture payment, uh, in January. And so, uh, four percent of sixty million is two point four million. Of course, you're not getting the interest on the money, but that means that, that's a half year interest, so you're not going to get eight percent on that money. So I'm, I'm just saying that if you, you, you would want to, you would want to take advantage of that early payment. We simply have the, we do have the money and you could pay it in January.
Okay, that was?
What was it, Richard, what was the amount again?
Four percent of the recapture payment.
Yeah, that was my question is do we have?
Sure, sure. Uh, I mean, ju- tax collection's coming in January. You're, you're, you know, you're, and they're, they're saying that's why they're making it at the end of January.
The business of the end of January, not January first, it would sound good.
No, it's not January first, it's just the end of January. And, and they, they used to do that. They, they give you a discount to pay it, you can pay half of it in January, get a discount, pay the other half in August. And it looks like they're going to go back to that, so, uh...
So now we need an incentive for everybody to come pay it?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we, but, uh, I will say this, ta- tax collection, I mean, you're, you're cash heavy in January, February, March and April. So, and, you know, it's, it's, uh, that, that would be an easy deal and one that you could, you'd want that, uh, that reduction in recapture by, by the quarter they're willing to put in.
Okay, I lost track of your math. So on your back page, go back to the other page. Okay, so, yeah, so, no, the, the one you were just talking, so when you were doing all your math, four million, so where were you at at the end? And where did you, and, did you bump up your interest revenue? That we got two point five million this year, did you bump that up?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I, no, I put it in for three, but I think, I think you can get to three and a half. I don't know what the feds are going to do in May and June, but, uh...
So that, that puts us at, what's your estimation?
So, so two, two is four. So, so, yeah, I did a little math in my head. Uh, five hundred and one point five is, is, uh, two and then, and then you got the two million up on the sixth golden penny. And then four hundred and forty thousand, I rounded it up to a half a million, so four point five million. But it, maybe you can take off that, that seven million.
So, so said another way, we have a seven point two deficit, but if you got everything in here, you're sitting at surplus.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to do the, the voter, you got surplus for the, for the following year.
So you're going to be sitting with a surplus.
Right.
The board figures out what they want to do with Derek. You've got a lot of work to do, Derek. Lots of analysis. And so basically, we're sitting at where potentially could be a surplus if everything hits.
Yeah, uh, the, the only thing I want to caution on the, on the voter, but that'll be, again, those discussions ongoing. But I, I believe on a voter, if you go out, you, you, you're asking the voters to approve a tax rate. And if it fails, then you'll roll back to the previous tax rate, which means you might be giving away that fifth and sixth penny back. So that's a, that could be a four million dollar the other way and now you're sitting at eleven. So with, so I'm just saying I would be very cautious as you, as you start talking about a voter and, and, and how you're going to get there and then, and then what you can, you can do with that. But, but you're right, there, there's a, there, there's a, there's a pathway to get to that balanced budget. Whether it's over a one-year period or a two-year period, uh, there's a, there's a pathway to, to get there.
And to kind of interject, um, you know, I, I know we're focusing on other revenue streams, which isn't really detailed in here. But, you know, IU University, that, that's a really great program we have and it reaches across any student in the entire boundaries of Texas. Um, Kyle, I know you've been working on numbers and, and working on, can you kind of give us an update or speak to that and what's happening there?
Sure. So we, uh, we've opened our registration about three or a half weeks ago for our returning students and new to students. We've already hit, you know, over two hundred new to district students. That's more students than we've ever had at this time compared to the past for new. And we've already passed the most returning students, read enrollment than we've ever had overall. So we've only been open for about three weeks, three and a half weeks. So we're trending very well on our enrollment. Now, of course, it's going to be applied as a major on that again. You have to go through that process, but this is the most applicants we've ever seen. We've also done, uh, a lot of analysis within side of current budget and, you know, we've done about, about two hundred thousand that will be able to come back through the district reductions and the overall IU budget in general. So along with that, uh, you know, our original goal is fourteen hundred to hit. We're very confident we'll get to hit that number. Maybe we'll get a little bit more in there, we'll kind of see, it's going to have some good control growth for us in that area. But we definitely are seeing a lot of interest and, and pressure right now.
So what is that, the, so what is that number? Uh, just roughly, but you don't have to be specific. So the two, the two hundred, what, what's the additional revenue?
So we have sixty-two hundred, about sixty-two hundred per student.
Yeah.
So if you bring in a one point two, one point three?
One point two, one point four.
Good work, guys.
With the, but the legislative update is the last. I just wanted to, to leave you with as where we are with, with House Bill one and some other adjustments. There, uh, there's still left with figuring out what they're going to do with the four B and for the next biennium. Uh, we haven't heard yet what the, uh, tax reduction's going to be. There's going to be tax compression, there's going to be a big tax break, uh, from the, for the citizens and, uh, it's going to go down. The basic allotment, uh, looks like it's pretty well set for the next two years, but there's another fifty dollars that you can put in for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, enrollment based funding applies to the, to the, uh, items that I've laid out below. And special ed, five hundred dollars street, special ed, special evaluation, that's a little bit of money also, uh, with, uh, uh, to the district. So that along with the golden pennies, uh, there are, uh, you know, you're going to get some money from the legislation, just not the point. And when we talked about the, the raise initially, it was three to six hundred dollars per basic allotment and that just didn't happen, so... Uh, the next step from the budget process, uh, we'll get our values from the appraisal district by May one. I think we'll probably have them, uh, this week. Uh, the legislation, uh, legislative session ends May twenty-nine. I think the special session's really a possibility, which really makes it on a couple of school districts that are understanding the revenue stream. They're battling over their, uh, what that tax compression's going to be just from a, uh, uh, an, an application process. Because we have to put it in the template, which has to be designed, it gives us some assurance that we're estimating correctly. The feds meeting, as I mentioned, May third and June fourteenth, that's been impact interest rates, I think they will probably hold, it might come down a little bit. There's a, we need to make a decision on the tuition rates impacting the, uh, extended care program. Uh, and then I think, uh, as we get into May, we can really finalize projected average day of attendance and see if we've been too aggressive in our approach to this or if it's, uh, one that we can go in next year with and see what that funding, what it looks like in June. Uh, the appropriation side, we haven't, uh, there, there's going to be some payroll budget variances that will need to be finalized by June one. Run all our payroll, uh, making sure we know our position, uh, control and, and what holds there. And then, uh, then talk about getting some money back through non-payroll budgets. Now, we cut the allocations for campuses and other accounts. Uh, we had requests back that we put in another half a million back into it, just to make sure that, you know, we cover inflation and some other things. Uh, Francis Paul's already booked the facility budget and, and made some, some cuts that were very beneficial that, to, to those particular budgets. And maybe being a little bit aggressive, those aren't in there yet, uh, but we'll, uh, we'll take those in batches on, on what we think we can, uh, reduce in that particular area and then move forward. So, that's it. Any, any other questions?
Kim, will that be posted in the board book and can we get a copy of the presentation?
Uh, yes, I guess, yeah, absolutely. Uh, and I want to just say, uh, I really appreciate the board, uh, and, uh, the administration that has given me support. Uh, you've been very gracious and, and, uh, polite and give me heads up and ask questions. You've asked good questions and, uh, I think we've kept the process going from, uh, January through April. Uh, as my wife says, after forty years, are you finally cured? And I said, yes, I never want to do this again. So, uh, so anyway, I thank you for that, uh, the full month that has energized me and been opportunity to get back in the mix with people. And that's what it's all about, people.
I do have one more question. Do we have any, um, any details on the one point five million reduction in payroll? Like what areas are we talking about or?
Uh, I, I think it, I think, and this is one of the, I'm glad you asked that. I mean, you can take those things through a reduction in force and then you know exactly where they're all going to be. I think that our approach has been through attrition, so therefore you're not quite sure where all those land. You have resignations and I don't want to speak for Gemma, but, but, but it's, it's a moving target as you go through. I think that they're tracking those resignations and then seeing if we're wanting to fill those positions. But, uh, uh, this, this is a, it's a big payroll and, and, and one point five is, I'm not going to say even significant, but it's, uh, it's, it's not probably the kind of cut that you have if you had a reduction in force and you identified within each, uh, area of what you wanted to cut and what you wanted that number to look like.
Well, I mean, we, we know that last week, we decided to cut three, um, dyslexic instructors. And we told them last week, we know that Julie's old advanced academic department used to have four people, now it's two. Uh, so, I mean, these are pretty significant, um, reductions right there, right? Uh, and in payroll department, we haven't replaced them yet. There's all, all the positions that we haven't replaced, so are we expecting to, you know, you, you, you mentioned attrition, but we actually made a, a con- and we made a decision to reduce the dyslexia instruction by three, so that's not attrition, that's just a decision that we made. So are we, what other areas are we looking at doing the same?
Awesome.
Yeah, Richard, I just want to say thank you for your time and we're going to bless you in the district.
Thank you very much.
Richard, I wanted, I wanted to express our gratitude too. You've been a joy to work with. You really have reinvigorated me to try and understand this, this information, so thank you very much.
So we are, um, reducing through attrition. I have put in an update in the board update on Friday. The ESER positions, um, the ESER lit positions, those were three ESER positions that we added last year. And so those employees, we are finding them another home. They're not losing their job.
Within, you said you were funding their own home, sorry.
But, but not doing dyslexia?
Right, those were ESER funded positions and those were cut, so we added those. I believe we added them at the beginning of this school year, I'll have to check that.
Could you explain what ESER funds are, what that means, how much money? It, it was a ten million dollars over three years, I believe.
Temporary.
And temporary funding.
You know, I can, um, describe ESER funds, but I think somebody else, Richard, could probably do it. You called me up, you know, I'll call you back. So we did have ESER funding, ESER funded positions and we, um, we use those to add extra support services. And that's what those were intended for. And so we did, um, you know, we did put recipients under ESER funds. We did add positions through ESER mass support specialists at the campus, reading support specialists at the campuses. And so now that those ESER funded positions have gone away, we are funding homes for the employees that had that. But some of those services that were provided under... But some of those services that were provided under ESTR funds will go away.
Thank you, yeah, you know, just so we're clear for the public, I mean, I have family members and friends who use these services. So that dyslexia is, the dyslexia services is definitely something we will keep an eye on and make sure, always making sure they're getting the services they need correctly.
Absolutely, so teaching a student to read is the most important thing. Do, Dr. Schacher and I are currently looking at some of the numbers of dyslexia students and where they were being served. And so we believe that we are going to be able to continue the strong academic dyslexia program with the number of students that we, the number of teachers that we will maintain on our staff.
So where is the savings for going from block scheduling to eight periods?
That's in that one point five.
That's in that one point five, so that's not really attrition, I mean, I mean, that attrition's going to happen organically. But, but going to block, to eight periods is going to come from that, okay, thank you.
I just wanted, just to make sure, because ESTR funds, having or not having, doesn't mean that the need for the service is gone, right? And we heard from one of the dyslexia instructors, we had emailed to all board members, that she was extremely concerned that we're going to go from twenty-six to twenty-three with the highest number of students that we ever had, which is a great thing, right, to have identification to the levels that we have. But it seems that those positions are still needed because the student's still here, we have, and we continue to do a great job identifying students. So I'm just, I'm just a little concerned that that one point five million reduction and attrition looks like just one line item. But it seems that it, it could have pretty significant effect on some of the services that we're providing.
Lisa Schopple started today as well, and so this will fall under her as well, and so Sheila and I will work with her. If we get to the point where we figure out we can't do it without requesting another dyslexia specialist, we'll be the first ones to come to you and request that. But we believe with the number of dyslexia literacy interventions that we have, we're going to be able to serve students in the same way. But if we can't, and the three of us would come here and request a position.
So yeah, I just want to kind of add to that, we're, we're committed to serving our students at a high level in that dyslexia support program. And it's something that is, as Gemma mentioned, you know, Lisa started today, she's hitting the ground running. She has experience in serving and supporting dyslexia programs in other districts. She will, we'll, we'll all evaluate that together to make sure, again, that we're, we're meeting every student's need as, as we move forward. And so it is a valid concern, certainly, you know, we, we hear that, we know that. And we're going to do everything we, we can and need to do to continue to support our students and, and, you know, continue to raise the bar as we teach reading here in GCISD for all learners, so, yeah.
So just right to follow up on that, I mean, you, you can't, you can't be as successful as we have been in advanced academics. We just, we have the department, right, and we, we have been doing that, you know, and this, you know, and that will affect the support that we give to a teacher. Because I know how busy those four people were when we had it, right? So, I mean, come here and say, yeah, we're going to serve with the kids, this and that, that's all great, but we know in advanced academics, we're doing it with two people instead of four. And, you know, the support is not there, you know, and I'm just, I'm just concerned about, this has been another area where we're saying that we're going to try and do. But, you know, you have the highest number of kids, you have got your coding position by three, and it looks just like a line item with a budget. But again, you know, I, I feel that definitely, this is not my thing, right, because I'll be gone, this is my last real meeting. But something to, for all seven, whoever comes to these chairs, to follow up, because, I mean, we, we have done a lot of work in both advanced academics and dyslexia, and we have not replaced those positions. And I feel that those positions are critical, and I'm concerned about doing the same thing with, with these three positions in dyslexia, so.
Can, can you find out when we added those positions and like just let us know? How many kids we had before we added them and how many we have now? Gemma, can you find that out for us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much, because I, I want to make, you know, to follow up on what Jorge said. I mean, we definitely want those children taken care of, there's no question about it, and I know that we're going to work with Lisa to make sure that that happens. She's new, we're going to give her a chance to get her feet on the ground and get back to us and let us know. But we appreciate her and, and we're not going to leave those kids hanging, that's for sure.
Yeah, there we go, so, so we've got three dyslexia specialists, you mentioned mass support and custodians. Are we cutting custodian positions or we're still funding them, they're just rolling back into the budget?
They're rolling back into one ninety-nine.
Okay, and, and same with the mass supports?
The mass specialist and reading specialist that we had at some of our middle schools, no, those positions will go away.
Okay, can we get a count of how many of those that's going to be? And then I'd also like to know, where are we, I believe the numbers that were given for Colleyville and Granton High Schools were twelve positions at Colleyville Heritage and fourteen at Granton High School, so that's twenty-six, where are we on that?
I can put that in the board update, I can, we work constantly, and so we're, we certainly haven't reduced all of those positions yet. But those principals are evaluating it as those resignations come in.
Okay, so we're just still hoping those people aren't going to resign, but we've still got the same number of kids. So we've got three dyslexia, twenty-six teachers at the high school level, mass support and, or mass specialists and reading specialists at the middle school. But we're looking at one point five million, just like we used to use fifty thousand as a rule of thumb on a fully loaded cost, but that's really not. So even just playing with sixty thousand, I'm coming up with that one point five million as being twenty-five positions. So why, why are we also trimming, you know, I, I guess I'm concerned that some of these numbers, are, are we cutting people that maybe we really didn't need to cut after all?
You're talking ESTR in one ninety-nine, you're talking two things here, and so.
It's true, but I'm also talking about, you know, the people in the classroom to support the students. And so if we're rolling some of these ESTR positions back into the budget, then that means you're still net, right? Of what's happening to the twenty-six teachers of high school, for example.
Just custodians, just custodians.
Okay, we're, so we're just doing away with the math and the reading at the, at the middle school level.
No, that was an extra support that was added after COVID.
So we're doing away with the extra support?
We are, we are, so those teachers pulled students, and I can get with the learning department to let you guys know how that will continue. Students are going to get the services they need, and so those people will not be there to provide those services. But a student who needs some extra support will continue to get that, and I can find, find that out and let you know.
Yeah, because I would really like to know, is that going to be something then that we're going to add to the teachers? Because if we're not replacing those, then who else in the building is going to be doing that? So I, I would really like to know what, what that is going to look like for our teacher classroom load, what they're expected to be doing.
I want to make sure that we're clarifying things, because I, I feel like we're deluding what the actual topic is right now. So ESTR funds was nine million dollars of federal funds that we paid for extra teacher support, for extra support, some of that money. I believe in the last pay raise that we gave to teachers was used for teacher pay raises. So I believe that's where, just going off of memory, and I think it was two, two million plus, I can't remember what the exact number was. So we're, we're trying to make this sound somehow like we're cutting positions, but we, we added support for things that were lost during COVID. So those three years are now gone, we no longer have ESTR funds, that, that nine million dollars is gone. So obviously, you don't continue to spend money that you don't have. So, you know, to, to the point that's being made, we're, we're trying to.
To add to your point, the whole point of the ESTR funds was for temporary relief, to build and get those students back to where they should have been over a three-year period, right? So that's why these funds were given to us, so you have to bring in temporary help, we've temporarily gotten them back to where they need to. The fund's running out, so you have to do something, we can't go off to the money tree anymore, it's gone. The federal government is not giving us those funds, and some of the state funds, we're not getting as well. Having said that, you know, it actually is attrition, because when you go from a block schedule which is seventy-five percent effective and you go to an eight period, it's eighty-eight percent effective, we're actually creating more teaching periods with less people, because those positions went away naturally. Because now we have teachers teaching seven periods out of the day, then you have third teacher period. And then on top of that, certain groups get additional periods for, for planning and so forth. So we really are doing it through attrition, we're not hitting our whiff. And, you know, I just think the public needs to understand, we're in a financial crisis, because we had a nine million dollar loss last year, which I voted against, a two million dollar loss the year before. So you have a lot of money going out the doors, we don't have enough revenue, you have to make a tough decision. We can't pass thirteen half million dollar deficit budgets, and, and our solution would be cross your fingers and hope something works out in our favor. We have to take our pencils, we got to take our erasers, and we got to take our calculators, and really make some tough decisions, so that's one of the.
I want to say that Julian and Alex and their counseling teams are really working hard constantly. Their two head counselors are really looking at course loads, student schedules, class sizes, who's teaching what. This is a very active time in the spring, you know, we're winning state championships, we're scheduling kids in courses, and they are working very hard to make sure they're doing right by every child and their program and what they need. And so in full faith in what those two campus principals and campus principal teams are doing to look at where we can be more wise as we make decisions for reducing student enrollment and the budget situation that Richard presented.
And, and I, I recognize how much effort is going in to try and make this as, as, as tight and as concise as we can be. I think last year we spent some time crossing our fingers that we could balance the budgets, to be fair. So we did cross our fingers in the election, and when we voted on a balanced budget.
Well, actually, I did not cross my fingers, I actually saw as a balanced budget, nor a shortfall due to a revenue shortfall. Everything we can control is expenses, we're up by less than a percent, that's pretty good.
I'd also like to add, Richard, one of the things that I've been very impressed with, because when I first met you, one of the things that you had said was that, you know, we were, we have been in a very tight spot. And we haven't made decisions in the past that were best for where we are. So we've made some decisions in the last year that literally are paying off today. And so it's pretty impressive that we've gotten our budget to, to where it is, and I appreciate that you've gone out for next year and then the year after. So our, our worst case scenario, next year, in my estimation, is two million dollar deficit. And best case scenario, we could be in a positive of a million. So we're making a lot of really good strides, and if you make a plan and then you work the plan, and, and I appreciate that. You're kind of setting us up for that, and I appreciate it.
All right, moving on to the next item.
What about the tax increase?
Can I just make one last remark? So it's really just about Richard Madkin, I met Richard in, I met Richard in, right at the beginning of December, his day in was, was transitioning out of the district, and he was so gracious to, to, to take this challenge on. Certainly, it's, it's been daunting, but I, I did not know Richard, but I can tell you this, that his financial acumen, combined with his relational skill set, is second to none. And I, I just want to say thank you, Richard, for, for choosing us, for taking on this challenge and being with us for, you know, the last three or four months, and just being all in. And, and thank you for working with our board, I want to thank our board for working with Richard. And, and I just want to, I want to go on record and thank your wife, Debbie, for, for letting you do this.
I didn't go very far.
Well, I, I know that, but I wanted, I want her, I want to be able to tell her, hey, I, I gave her kudos, but no, seriously. You, you didn't have to do this, certainly in, in, in your, your time of life, you, you could do other things, like play golf and probably what you're going to do what tomorrow or the next day. But I can't thank you enough, I've, I've been, it's, it's been an honor to work with you, and, but really to just call you friend now, man. And just want to thank you for, for helping us, for choosing us, and we will be forever grateful for you, Richard Madkin, thank you.
Next item, review contingency expenditures.
Yeah, so you've had the report in the packet for your review, so we're subject to any questions you may have on this contingency forum.
Questions, next item, review twenty-two, twenty-three board planning calendar.
No changes at this time on the board planning calendar.
Next item, request for reports to board.
Since it just came out, I think it's time to go back and look at how we spent our ESTR funds. So I'd like an update, a, a reporting update, whether it be the update or the next meeting, about how we used ESTR funds. My understanding is those are just the last three years, and we tapped them out quicker than that. So I just want to understand, you know, what the deadlines were, when we spent them, and what we use them for, and how, how, what we use them for is impacting where we're going to be in the next budget cycle.
Do I have a motion? Make your motion, make your motion.
Motion to approve the report.
Second, second all in favor, will be available next meeting, go ahead.
I'd like, um, there was a report that was referenced by some of the two one dual language parents, and I'd like us to, to have that report. I think it was a, you mentioned an outside or third party report from PSC six. And so I'd like to, to have that presented to the board's office.
Do I have a motion? Report, have a second, all in favor, show hands. Motion passes seven oh. Items consent agenda, I have a motion to pass the consent agenda. All right?
I want to pull one item.
All right, which one?
M, first one now.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to pull item D, please.
Which one? Dog? All right, all those in favor to pass the consent agenda, except for items D and M, show hands. I'll make the motion to pass consent agenda, second, show hands, all right, passes seven oh. First item is D.
All right, this item is the donation from Heritage Elementary PTA, Richard, can you walk us through this?
Well, as you know, different organizations do things at their campus, they raise the money.
I'm going to save you a little bit of time, I just have two quick questions.
Oh, okay.
So number one, I felt, first of all, that if one of our campuses was donating, if our parents were donating sixty thousand dollars, that really we ought to have the opportunity to, to acknowledge that rather than just pass it on the consent agenda, because that is an enormous amount of money. I did have a question though, because the amount is sixty thousand, but the projects listed are only forty-seven. And I really wanted to know where the other thirteen thousand is supposed to be going.
So they are working on still the pricing for the shed and a couple of other items, and so they rounded up because of the amount of money that they had to make sure that they would have what they needed, and they, they just made it a part of the overall, hey, this is the donation that, that we're making. and they, they just made it a part of the overall, hey, this is the donation that, that we're making to the school district for phase one. So they're just kind of rolling it up based on the pricing that they have, but they haven't finalized everything.
Okay, so the scope of the project won't change, the district couldn't use that fund from some, the additional thirteen thousand for something else?
No, this would, this is strictly for their, their project, and they will expend the amount of monies that they need by going directly to those contractors to have the work performed. It's not coming to the district that way. It's a donation of the project, phase one project as described.
Okay, gotcha, good.
They've kind of estimated it could be as much as sixty, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, well, hats off to them again for raising sixty grand, that is awesome, and I can't wait to see it, because I know we have a lot of outdoor learning centers at our campuses, and if this one is something that no one's done before, I can't wait to see it. So thank you to those Heritage Elementary parents.
All right, so the recommendation is for the board trustees, it's for the board trustee to accept a donation of sixty thousand dollars from the Heritage Elementary School PTA for the outdoor learning area project. Have a recent lady.
I will accept.
Thank you for the seconds, all those in favor, show hands. Passes seven oh. Thank you very much, Heritage Elementary School, I actually was just gonna thank you after we passed the consent agenda, so that was, was my plan, very thoughtful gift, definitely will go along with our district, and I'm super excited to have this, thank you. Next item. So the next item on the contingent is the personnel update and report, so we'll dismiss for executive session, because during the course of the meeting, discussion, any item on the agenda should be dealt with. The board will conduct a closed meeting and the board should text us a meeting act. Texas government code, chapter five, line one, section D and E, the specific code section, five, five, one point zero, point four, for the purpose of considering the appointment and plan evaluation, duty discipline, dismissal of a public officer employee or to hear complaints or charge against a public officer or complaint.
Hey, Casey, I'm not, Casey, I'm not really talking about any particular employee, I just, I, I made a request to put this on the agenda, and it made it to consent, and my question was if we could get information on resignations of this year versus last year, and also comparison of jobs open this year versus last year, and I just wanted to know if the information was available.
So we don't have, it's not about any personnel?
No.
Individual?
No.
Gemma, do you have any information on that? We will not be dismissing the executive session, just to provide this quick update.
We have, late last week.
Let me interrupt you a quick, Gemma, Brad, I'll have you read the recommendation first. So the recommendation is for the board trustees to approve the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three personnel report. Do I have a motion? Shannon?
Motion to approve the personnel report.
I have a second, totally, all right, go ahead, Gemma, thank you. You ever told me one page to proceed?
Yes, it's written back. As of late last week, we have twelve more open positions than we did this time last year. And then the report I'm giving you right now is a report of our openings as of late last week. I do not have a report of what positions we had open this time last year. That's a little more complicated, it is not something easily that we can pull out of our system. I would need to put someone on that, it would take a significant amount of time just to figure it out. They can figure it out, but it would take a lot of time, this was easy to figure.
So this one has the twelve extra position on this paper?
No, this is our, these are our open positions right now. The twelve positions, do you mean the ones that were reducing through attrition?
No, you said this is twelve more than last year, but this has them all, right?
Correct, yes, it does, yes.
So Gemma, part of that too, one of the things that I've requested, but was not on the agenda, was a copy of our current org chart, organizational chart, that shows.
Actually, point of order, Gemma, she didn't have a second to put it on the agenda, so we can't address that in this meeting. We'll have to address that in the next one.
Yes, I did.
No, you do not.
Yes, I did.
You seconded Jorge's, you did not have a second yours.
Um, yes, Jorge and I submitted.
So you don't need to answer that question, because it wasn't seconded properly, according to policy.
So.
Is that good then? And you didn't do it timely? But there were six days.
Yes.
You just seconded that, I don't know.
Oh, my.
Go to your next.
So anyway, as part of the personnel information that I would like to have, Gemma, I would like a copy of the current org chart, has the open positions delineated, and the positions that have been eliminated are combined with other positions, similar to what we were talking about just a little bit ago. So, but I would especially like a copy of our current org chart and what we're moving to. Again, with those open positions shown, for example, the two cuts that are in the advanced academics department, I would expect to be shown on that, the custodians. I'd really like to get a picture of, of what it is that we're doing.
So the org chart that we have is a district, is a part of what is included in the financial report, and it does not go down to that level.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you what positions we're reducing through attrition, I can do that. And these are the positions right now that are open.
So, right, so these are just the ones that are open, but that someone's resigned.
Yes.
But it's not, or retired, right, this is both, both options, okay. But, for example, it's not showing, like admin, this is just the ones that are open. So I'd also like to know what we're making as well. We mentioned the three dyslexia specialists, we mentioned the math and the reading, and so I think what my concern is, is I feel like we're getting some of this stuff kind of rolling in piecemeal, and we don't really have a good picture of what, first of all, particularly the org chart here in the administrative office looks like.
Point of order, Becky, can you give the point of business on the agenda?
Yeah, I.
Because this is the question you want for another meeting, this is not on the agenda, can you please move forward?
This is personal information that I'd like to have.
Right, which you'll have to do in the next meeting, we already passed board reports that we requested, so we've already passed on the agenda.
Okay, these are questions regarding personnel, and I would like them answered.
One of the questions you asked earlier, Becky, about the ESTER report, I believe that was you, I wrote down to get with Shannon on, Shannon Tobart, she oversees the ESTER funds, and so we have spreadsheets, and I think she could put together an easy presentation for you guys to show you what all we pay for with ESTER funds, what kind of positions we pay for with ESTER funds. And so I think that'll probably answer a lot of your questions too about the positions that went away.
Yeah, it was Coley. Coley has that, but.
But that will answer some of the questions you just asked.
Yeah, the ESTER is obviously a piece of this, so are the positions of high school, so are the open positions that we have here in admin. And I, and I know we had a principal, and I know we had some other resignations here.
It's on the sheet we, yeah, it was sitting in. Gemma, I have a question for you, the check marks, does that mean they've been filled?
They did, so we created this late last week, and then principals made recommendations for those three positions. So this changes daily, this changes daily, so this was created late last Thursday.
All right, all those in favor, let me.
Hold on, I, I've got something that I wanted to mention on personnel, because I think this is pretty awesome. There was an article that literally was written, and I wanna just, I'm not gonna read it, but I'm gonna read the title, because I think it's pretty interesting. Why teachers are turning down lucrative offers to stay at this Texas school? And it was about Colleyville Middle School. So props to the fact that, that's a great article, and we should feel proud about that.
Your job, Gemma. One other, one other question. And the national trend, I mean, the trend of the data is teachers have been struggling in this, in this profession for, prior to COVID, actually, right? And so it's only been extrapolated, you know, over the last few, few years, correct?
I remember back, well before COVID, I heard the numbers of how many teachers we were going to have that next year that were alternatively certified. Let's say it was five percent or ten percent, and I thought, we probably won't have that many. And now the numbers after COVID, we are, we are, there were certain districts that wouldn't accept alternatively certified teachers, we always have. And we welcome those with open arms now, but that's just one of the trends that has changed over the course, pre-COVID, COVID, and now. The traditional route does not look the same. Colleges of Education, C-plus students, every year, when we go to job fairs, we're getting good interest, but where we used to have a line out the door, the line is only like fifteen deep now.
And you're noticing that across the state and other districts.
It's happening to everyone in Texas, in the nation.
Keep working hard, doing your job, all those in favor of recognition, show hands. Passes seven oh. Now dismissed to executive session at seven fifty. The board will adjourn to close our executive session pursuant to Texas government code section five, five, one point zero, zero, one, five, five, one point zero, zero, two, five, five, one point zero, zero, four, and five, five, one point zero, six. Five, five, one point zero, zero, one, private consultation of the board's term on any mail subjects or management law, otherwise by law. Five, five, one point zero, zero, two, to deliberate the purchase of changed lease or value real property. Five, five, one point zero, zero, four, for the purpose of considering the appointment and plan evaluation, reassignment, duty discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee. And five, five, one point zero, zero, six, to deliberate the deployment for specific occasions for implementation of security personnel devices or a security pilot.
As you guys know, Executive Director of Special Services, Derek Sibley, I guess he is, he's standing in the lobby, so he is meet and greet already out, out front, but I wanna welcome them. But last week, some of you were at the combined chamber luncheon where we honored our employees of the year across the district, announcing our district elementary teacher of the year, Ashley Benson, from Bransford Elementary, secondary teacher of the year, Patton Gurey, from Greatbun High School, and peer professional of the year, Tony Carvali, from Greatbun Middle. Just really wanna share my gratitude with the Colleyville and Greatbun Chambers, with Redana and Chelsea, and just their role and leadership that they took to, to make that event happen. It's really cool to see a full event room like that there to honor and celebrate our employees, and so, which kind of staying along that same trail, later this week, we will honor our retirees for their dedication and service to education. We're looking forward to that celebration, and just, just to recognize the impact that, that, that they all have brought throughout their careers. This week is National Library Week, and we wanna take a moment to thank our hard-working librarians who support the learning at our campuses and still such a love of reading in our students, that literacy is extremely important here in GCSD. I just wanna add to the many celebrations that we heard tonight. Chloe Cirkin of GHS won the regional golf tournament in Lubbock to qualify for the state tournament, which will be in Georgetown in a few weeks. Both softball teams have made the playoffs, with Colleyville Heritage High School finishing second, and Greatbun High School finishing fourth in district. They will play in by district later this week around the, the star in EOC testing. The Greatbun High School baseball team swept Argyle last week, that was a huge, huge week for them, and they clinched the district championship, so they will go into the playoffs as the one seed. We have eighteen student athletes who will be, be competing at the regional meet this weekend in Lubbock, and good luck to our seven talented artists who will be, whose work will be judged at the VACE competition this coming weekend, the visual arts scholastic event. And then last, I just wanna invite our community to the Walk a Mile with GCSD event on Thursday, May eleventh, from six to eight, at Mustang Panther Stadium, so appreciate it.
I want to recognize that testing season is upon us. Our students started taking, I know at least the high school started taking their English end-of-course exams, but testing season is stressful on our students and our administrators, and so I wanna recognize and, and wish everybody the very best, and we, APA testing is right on the tail of that. And then we have, nobody's counting, I'm sure, twenty-three days of school left.
Yep, I might have a few announcements too, one with star testing's coming up, so pray for all your little kiddos, have them be well-rested and well-fed, and be ready to tackle the days ahead of them. Congrats for the Lady Mustangs on their state championship, I know we recognized them, but I was a soccer player, so I was really excited for them, I lost eight, so I was pumped for them. And then I wanna thank the Rotary Club for the dictinaries they gave to our children, so that's it.
Yeah, one, one quick last announcement, just wanna say a special thank you to Jorge, Coley, and Casey. I know this is your last full meeting, we now, we, we have, we'll see you next month, and we will honor you then, but just, this is, this is a time for you guys to dance, dance at your last full meeting, so.
Coley, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second, Tammy seconds, all those in favor, show hands. Motion to pass the seven oh. Eight forty-five.